This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for Tuesday, October 14th at 6:00 p.m. If we could start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, we have a quorum tonight. John is not going to be able to be with us tonight, so we have the three of us. Do we have anyone here for Citizen Speak, anything that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, okay. I would like to make a motion, if anybody doesn't mind this, to move our Appointments and Resignations category up above the Audit Presentation, since we have our two candidates here in the audience.
I'd like to have them I'll second that motion.
Have them join us and not, if you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but I definitely don't want to put you at the very end of our meeting here. So, let me get going here. We have an application from Amy Alton and David Alton for the Greenway Committee, and this will be a three-year term to expire at June 30th, 2028. And how about each of you just come on up and take turns, just introduce yourself and your address, and just tell us a little bit about your background and why you'd like to volunteer for the Greenway Committee?
Absolutely a pleasure to meet you all. I'm David Alton. My wife and I live at 22 Coleman Road. We just moved in last October. Before that, we spent 10 years living on a sailboat and having some fun adventures, and decided this part of Massachusetts would be a fun place to settle down. So, we have really enjoyed the Manhattan Rail Trail going north, and part of the reason we actually chose to live in this part of Massachusetts was because of the rail trail system. And to find that there's an opportunity to be able to work and help Southampton to develop that further south is something we're definitely interested in being a part of. So, it is definitely a passion of ours to be able to be outdoors and enjoy the beautiful area we live in now. So, yeah, we'd like to be able to be a part of what we can.
That's great. And I think in your application, you mentioned that you have a background in finance and commercial negotiations, so...
I do. I studied finance in school, and upon graduating, I actually worked for Shell Oil Company in Houston, and had a background negotiating commercial contracts and stuff like that. So, it has been a while since we've done that, since we've lived on the boat, but it is a part of my past history that I do have some experience with.
Very good. Wonderful. Good. Amy, would you like to...
Thank you.
Hi. It's nice to meet everyone. There's not much I can add, other than what David said. We both enjoy the rail trail a lot. David, in particular, has picked up a lot of biking, and I'm meeting friends and taking family out for walks on it all the time, and I look forward to someday being able to venture into Southampton and enjoy the rail trail along there as well.
And your professional background?
I have an engineering degree, mechanical engineering, but I only did that for less than a year, and then I started working in my family business, which was in the hospitality and entertainment industry, dinner cruises in Houston. And now I am an author.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Wow.
Thank you.
Good. All right. So, I think we have two candidates for the Greenway Committee. Steven, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to move two appointments. Amy Alton and David Altman, new appointments to the Greenway Committee, each three-year terms to expire on June 30th, 2028.
Okay. Second half? All right. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Very, very simple in that regard, but thank you very much for stepping up. I applaud you as new residents to town, so welcome to town as well, and it'll be great to have your input on this committee. It's a very, very active committee, and I know you've met a couple of the members, especially you've been attending a couple of meetings, from what I hear, so you've got a sense of what you're walking into. And I think now's an appropriate time to get involved. They've been very busy, and they will keep on working. They just got some good news recently, so I'm sure you'll hear about that at the upcoming meeting. Good. Thank you for coming, and thanks for stepping up.
Do it your love.
Yes. Very good.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, so with that, let us turn to our main presentation for tonight, and that is the presentation from CBIZ, formerly Markham LLP, formerly Melanson. And we have Tanya back with us, and she's going to be talking about our FY23 Audit, Financial Statements, and Action Plan, and anything that we might need to take into consideration. So, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. My name is Tanya. I am the partner on the Towns Audit, and here tonight to present the results of the fiscal year 2023 audit. Here, we went through all the name changes over the years. Last year, it was Markham. We're back, we're up to CBIZ now, and we should hopefully be done changing names going forward. I'm going to start by giving just kind of a brief overview of the audit process and the roles and responsibilities of the three parties in this room for the audit. And then we can talk a little bit about the financial statements, some of the key numbers, and go over the comments we had in the back of the report as well. Definitely, just stop me any time as we're going through, and if there's something you want to talk more about or touch on, just let me know. Now, in terms of our responsibilities as your independent auditor, we are ultimately responsible for expressing an opinion on the Towns' financial statements. We're also responsible for planning and performing our audit to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. Please keep in mind that an audit does not provide absolute assurance. We don't look at every single transaction. We don't pour through every single record the Town has. We would never leave Town Hall. And that's not what an audit is designed to do. When we're planning and performing our audit procedures, we use a concept known as materiality, which is a numerical calculation that tells us what we need to test and look at in each fund that the Town has. So, using that number, along with evaluating the risks and looking at different things, that's what drives our testing. Now, as part of the audit process, we perform a couple of different kinds of testing. So, we obviously were looking at the Town's internal controls. You know, what processes and procedures do you have in place? What controls do you have? We're also looking at analytical procedures, so budget versus actuals, year-over-year trends, things like that, and performing what we call substantive testing, where we're actually drilling down and looking at balances. So, you know, the cash balance per the general ledger, does that agree to what your treasurer has for reconciled cash? You know, things like that. We also do some stamping, looking at invoices, payroll, you know, the full gamut of things. The responsibilities of management, excuse me, as part of the audit process, they are ultimately responsible for the financial statements. We assist in preparing them, but after they've been prepared, they have to take responsibility for them at the conclusion of the audit. Management's also responsible for establishing those internal controls that we look at and test as part of our audit procedures, and making sure that the Town complies with all the various laws and regulations that are applicable to the day-to-day activities. As part of the audit, management is responsible for providing us with documentation and information that we need to complete our audit procedures. And at the conclusion of the audit, they're responsible for providing a letter that confirms the various representations that were made to us as part of the audit process. So, any inquiries we made, the documents that were provided, they're essentially saying what they gave us is true and accurate to the best of their knowledge. Now, in terms of your responsibilities, you're responsible for overseeing the entire process. So, at the start of the audit, we reach out and let you know, you know, we send our engagement letter, here's what our procedures are. During the audit, we make inquiries to make sure there's no concerns that the board has, or any allegations, fraud, or anything that we should be made aware of as part of our audit. And at the conclusion, we meet and discuss the results of the audit. Does anyone have any questions so far? Okay. Now, in terms of the financial statements, they are presented under rules established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, also known as GASB. They are the ones responsible for telling us what needs to be reported in the financial statements and how it needs to be reported. So, if you flip through the pages, pretty much every other page has some kind of a reference to a GASB standard and the requirements of what needs to be reported. There are essentially five components to your financial statements. The first is the Independent Auditor's Report, which is where we express our opinion on the financial statement. So, that's one of the only pieces of this financial statement that actually belongs to us. In fiscal year 2023, we issued the Town an unqualified opinion on the financials, which means that based on our testing, we found that the Town was in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, that is the opinion that you want to have. Following that, you have Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is essentially like a brief overview of the financial statements. It provides some descriptions of what's included in the document, as well as some of the key numbers and results of operations from the past fiscal year that we have been auditing. It's like an executive summary, if you think of it that way, like what is included, and that goes through and describes that kind of in a much condensed manner. Following that, you have your two sets of financial statements, your government-wide statements and your fund basis statements. And we'll take a look at one of each of those in just a minute and kind of talk through some of the numbers there. Following that, you have your notes and your required supplementary information, which provide more detail and disclosures on the actual numbers that are reported in your government-wide or fund basis statements. So, you know, the Town reports a net pension liability. That is one number in your financial statements. There's a lot that goes into that liability, and your footnotes and your other disclosures talk about what that liability is, what the actuarial assumptions are that are used to calculate it, and also provide like a 10-year history of what that liability was, what your contributions to the system was, things like that. And in this document, there's also what we call the Yellow Book Report, but is basically a report on internal controls and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. So, in fiscal year 2023, the Town was not required to have a federal grant audit because there was not more than $750,000 in federal expenditures. So, we did not need to perform those audits, but we did still perform this audit in accordance with government accounting standards and test for compliance with laws and regulations and things like that. So... That is that. So, in terms of looking at the actual financials themselves, I don't know if you have them in PDF. It is on page 19 of the actual PDF document. So, if you... Yep, the balance sheet, right there. I'll give you just a second to flip there. Okay. So, the balance sheet is one of your fund basis statements. And your fund basis statements are the set of statements that most closely resemble the Town's internal records. If you're looking at this page on the left-hand side, the first column there is your general fund. That is the main operating fund of the Town. Also presented in that column are the Town's stabilization funds. So, GASB requires us to group those all together when we report them in the financial statements. It's page 19 of the PDF, if you want to flip to that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find it here. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Is it the same one, Scott? I'm not sure.
No, no, you're fine, Scott. I was just...
Yeah, I think ours is a little bit different here.
Christine looked like she was struggling. Oh, okay.
We have a different page number, I think, that's all.
The page number at the bottom is 16, like on the actual page itself. But in the Adobe document, it's page 19.
Okay. Yep, we got it.
Okay, perfect. Sorry. Yeah, no, there's a lot of numbers on that page. So, this is the one that more closely resembles the Town's internal records. Going to focus a little bit on the bottom left-hand corner of the page in the Fund Balance section. Specifically, your general fund unassigned balance, which at the end of the year was just under $1.7 million. That number is made up of two things. The first of which is the Town's General Stabilization Fund, which at the end of fiscal year 2023 had a balance of about $550,000 in it. Last year, I had mentioned that the, you know, it... Sorry, let me back up a little bit. That balance grew about $140,000 from the prior year, which is great. I mean, last year, we had a conversation about how it was a little bit on the lower side. You know, I know the Town can only do so much in terms of putting money aside, but it is good that that balance is growing, and it now represents about 2.5% of the Town's annual operating budget. So, you know, did make improvements from the prior year, which is good. The other piece of that number, about $1.1 million, is your general fund unreserved balance, which that's what's left at the end of the day, after you've, you know, all your revenues and expenditures have closed out. You've set aside all the funds that you're required to set aside. You've encumbered everything, like that's what's left. That is the starting point for the Town's free cash calculation. And that number pretty much doubled from the prior year, which is very good. You know, so that balance represents just under 6% of the Town's annual operating budget, so much healthier than it was in the prior year, which is a good sign. That was really all I had for that page to talk about, unless anyone had any other questions there.
Anybody? Questions?
We're going to flip back two pages to the, yep, the Statement of Net Position. This is actually the second page of your Statement of Net Position. The first page lists the assets of the Town, but we're going to focus on the liabilities, unfortunately. So, the Statement of Net Position is one of your government-wide statements. The government-wide statements are GASB's way of taking your governmental operations and showing them like a business. So, if you think of the page we were looking at previously and had all those columns listed across the top, you consolidate all those together, and those get reported in your governmental activities column. The business-type activities represent the Town's enterprise funds. Those get consolidated together and reported as business-type activities. After consolidating all the numbers together, we go through the process of adding things like your capital assets, your long-term debt, your other long-term liabilities. Then those get reported on these sets of statements. So, the government-wide statements do a great job in terms of showing the true assets and liabilities of the Town, but they're not meant to be used when you're making day-to-day decisions, because you guys don't operate like a business. You know, you're pay-as-you-go. Every year, when your debt comes due, you pay your debt. That's part of the process. You buy a capital asset that gets expensed as part of the budget, you know? So, these are good, but shouldn't be used when making kind of day-to-day decisions. And kind of at the bottom of that page, you know, unrestricted number there of a negative 11, almost $12 million, that is not uncommon, just FYI. The main reason you have such a large negative number there is because you're net pension and you're net OPEB liability. We're required to record those big liabilities. If you did not have those, you would have a positive unrestricted net position. Not uncommon at all. Most of our towns that we audit, that's... They present the things the same way. Sorry.
Would you mind just repeating that again?
Sure.
Negative 11 is inclusive of the OPEB contributions that we've reserved?
That... No. So, the reason that number is so big, so that's essentially like your retained earnings, right? Which you don't want to be a negative number.
Right.
But the reason it's so big is because we have to record the net pension and the OPEB liability, and those are offset with your unrestricted fund balance. So, if we got rid of that $15 million of liabilities, you would obviously have a positive net position down there. So, I just want to point that out, because it is a big number. It's a big negative number. It's not uncommon, especially because of those two big liabilities that you're required to record on these set of statements. So, and like I said before, you know, the fund basis statements we were looking at previously, those are more indicative of your day-to-day operations and how you operate. You pay health insurance every month, right? So, you know, this liability that we're going to talk about in a minute, your OPEB liability, that's, you know, if you had to pay everyone out, what would you have to pay them? Which is great to know, but that's not how you're going to operate, you know, on an annual basis. So...
So, while we're talking about OPEB on this page, could you make that a little bit bigger, Scott? Sorry.
Yeah, we're going to focus on the non-current liabilities.
I was just curious. Want to talk about the deferred inflows of revenues related to OPEB? Could you explain that a little bit?
Oh, sure. We have an hour, right? No, I'm just kidding. Right. So, your OPEB liability is calculated by an actuary, and they use various assumptions, right? So, they say, okay, we think your investment rate of return is going to be 5%. And we think health insurance costs are going to go up 6%. Whatever that's...
There's a... We wish.
Yeah, sore subject, I know. So, obviously, they're making those assumptions and calculating that liability. And then every year, they say, okay, well, what actually happened? Did health insurance go up 7%? If it did, they don't make you change your liability by that full amount in one year, because your liability would just go like this every year, basically, if they did that. So, they average it out and they smooth it over a period of time, somewhere around six years, usually. It's a little bit different for every town. And so, they defer it. And so, you end up with, if the assumptions aren't exactly what they thought they were going to be, and they can be off by a substantial amount, depending on, you know, what numbers they're using and how things come in, that's essentially just sitting there, and it's going to go away and get amortized each, a piece of it each year. I think that's... Does that make sense?
Close enough.
Okay, yeah. And there's deferred outflows as well, which when things go good, then, you know, good and bad, there's both that get kind of amortized and factored into expense each year. Otherwise, you would have a really big adjustment to your expenditures every year that, you know, would be really hard to understand the financial statements. It was all over the road like that. So, they're trying to smooth it out. There's, if you actually look at the footnotes for OPEB, it shows what those deferrals are, and if it's a change in assumption... Oh, God, I don't know if you want to go there, but... And then it shows how they're being amortized, like over the five years or so. So, yeah, that's a tricky one. That's a good question. So, if you want to scroll back up just a little bit, we're going to look at the net pension and the net OPEB liability. So, at the end of 2023, your net pension liability, which is your share of Hampshire County Retirement Systems unfunded liability, was about $6.5 million. That went up about $2.1 million from the year before. The reason for that was the system itself incurred market value losses in calendar year 2022. So, they operate on a calendar year basis, while you guys are in a fiscal year. Their calendar year 2022 figures are what's used to report your net pension liability for 2023. Everyone across the board saw losses in calendar year 2022. So, again, this is pretty consistent from town to town. Everyone's pension liability went up in fiscal year 2023. On the plus side, looking ahead, we already know it's going to go down, because the market did much better in calendar year 2023, so you're going to see the opposite next year. But, you know, just the Town itself, you know, represents just over 3% of the total system itself, and your liability only changed by $2.1 million. I mean, it's a decent amount, but there are some that jumped like tens and twenties of millions of dollars because of the market value losses. So... That's that number. Right below that, you have your net OPEB liability, which is the Town's share of retiree health insurance. You're not required to fund that liability, you know, unlike the net pension liability, which you have, you know, the funding schedule for the retirement system. That may change at some point, but I don't see, you know, anyone mandating that at this time. You know, the Town has established an OPEB trust fund and does put some money into it each year when you can, so that is good. And that's kind of what the bond rating agencies want to see. You know, the fact that you've recognized there's a liability out there, you've established a trust, you're starting to put money aside. Like every Town situation is going to be different in terms of how much you can put in, but at least you've recognized there's the liability, and you're going to put money towards it. So, that is good. That liability went up about $700,000 from the prior year. There wasn't anything drastically that caused it to change. It was just some slight changes in assumptions and the calculation. But for the most part, it stayed consistent from the prior year. Does anyone have any other questions on these statements? I know. I know. He knows how to get in touch with me if he has any questions.
He didn't send me any questions.
Okay. All right.
Not that I know of, anyway.
Yeah. So, the last thing I was going to talk about is at the end of the report, and that's the Yellow Book Report, which is what I'm going to call it. It's probably, it's on page 75, so it's probably 78 of the actual, like, PDF document. Yeah, so, okay. So, this is reported. Actually, I probably want to go a couple pages farther down.
Right after your signature page there?
Yeah. Yeah. So, there wasn't a formal management letter this year. I know you guys received a copy of, you know, some of the verbal recommendations that we had that are really just things for the departments to consider in the next fiscal year audit. We did have two findings this year. The first one related to the transfer station. Yeah. So, at the end of the fiscal year, the expenditures were over the budgeted amount by about $15,000. And in addition, revenues were less than budget by $3,504,000. So, there was an operating deficit at the end of the year in that fund. And I know it's kind of gone back and forth over the years. When, you know, when we do come in and do the audit, sometimes it has good years, sometimes it doesn't. It's always, I think it's pretty consistent for these types of funds as well, from town to town, you know, that have a separate transfer station fund.
I think part of this occurred too before we made a significant change, where we took the cost of capping the landfill out of the transfer... Sorry, out of the transfer station funds itself
Yes.
and put it back on our backs as the Town.
Right.
So, hopefully, this will look a little bit better next year.
Should resolve itself, yeah, next year. Yeah, I did see that. You know, the Town provided responses to these comments, and that was, yeah, part of the response. So, that is good. Yes. The next comment, it has to do with how revenue is recorded, specifically in your water and sewer enterprise funds. So, as, we were talking a little bit earlier, but if you think of when water and sewer meters are red, they're, you know, red for a previous timeframe, right? And then go through the process of preparing a commitment, setting up bills, that doesn't get done until, you know, after that timeframe has ended, and you're billing for a previous period. In the past, you know, in discussions with management and stuff like that, like if you look at those on an annual basis, overall, from a revenue standpoint, there's not really a big difference where if you're adjusting for the prior year and adjusting for the current year, you're backing out last year and adding in the current year, and you're not, there's not really a net difference in the revenue that's reported in your financial statements for the water and sewer enterprise funds. May change slightly based on consumption and changes in rates and things like that, but overall, it's fairly consistent year over year. but overall, it's fairly consistent year over year because you're just moving both of those to the right period of time. When you look at it from the receivable standpoint, even though you didn't bill those until after year end, those technically should be receivables in the, in the fiscal year where the actual readings and the occurred, yeah. So because that's a bigger number, we had to, we're adjusting for that. It's a one-time, like, one and done. It won't be an issue going forward, like, it's good to go. But, so that's, that's where this comes from. So it's not super concerning to us and it will be, you know, will not be repeated next That's, that's all I had, unless anyone had any other specific questions.
All right, anybody have questions, comments?
And I know we're working on starting the fiscal year 2024 audit and getting things more cut up, so.
Right. Right, I think we, Scott had already provided the response letter, so you've got that?
Yep.
So this is actually considered the final?
This is done.
The final audit for '23.
Yep, we are done. Everything's been submitted to you guys and the state and.
What can we do to facilitate a quicker process for the current?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, that's a good question. I haven't, I haven't had any conversations with our team yet or, you know, the town accountant. I know you guys have a new treasure collector, so certainly maybe having a conversation with them and setting deadlines. I know that, you know, sometimes that works well for people, other times it doesn't, like, you need to have everything to us by this certain date. I mean, part of the problem too is if we set a time to get stuff and work on the audit and then we don't get it, then we're pivoting and, I mean, we're scheduled back to back to back to back with audits and stuff right now. So if we have a set of time to work on it, like, we need to be able to focus on it and get through as much as we possibly can. So I, we can certainly coordinate with, with, you know, the treasurer, the town accountant, Scott, and, you know, include you guys in the loop on, like, you know, here's the set timelines. If you get us everything by this point, we will get you financial statements by this point, so.
I think our challenge has been, we've had a lot of input from the accountant's office, I think, and I think probably from you, Scott. And we've had some from the treasure collector's office, but obviously with the turnover, that's been a, a bit of a learning curve, so we've been a little bit behind the eight ball. But I think we were also assuming that CBIZ was not ready to take this on until you really finished '23, right?
Yeah, no, yeah, we can, right.
Now, but this late for that, anyway, for us, it is clear. So if we can do whatever we can do to help with, with Megan, you know, finding whatever documents she may need to provide to you so that you can at least get started on it, I think that will be our biggest challenge, probably.
Scott's been working on the kind of timelines and schedules.
Yep.
Across all the finance responsibilities, so.
Right.
I don't know, if it's Tuesday afternoon and our time slot comes up.
Right, right. Yeah, no.
Call us.
Right.
Well.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we can definitely, we definitely do something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything, Ellen, any questions? Okay, Scott, any comments? Good.
All right.
Well, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Much appreciate it.
Thanks, thank you.
And we will do our best to get you what you need for FY24's audit so we can keep that moving. We're certainly on a mission to get our free cash certified far ahead of wherever we've done it in the last three or four years, so we will keep on chugging on that direction here, so. Good, thanks for coming in, Tony. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, next up will be town administrator report, Scott.
So as last meeting, looks like we're voted and moved into the 32B Section 23 negotiations to the unions. We're going to be negotiating, starting our first one on Thursday, within seven days of the vote. And we're going to be moving forward, start the 30-day period, and we're going to move forward with the negotiations, so probably by the, the end of mid-November, we'll have a, hopefully, an agreement in place, moving into the GIC.
Just, just to move into that a little bit more, with a little bit more clarity for those that are listening, just because we had an executive session last week and then voted in, in public to adopt the 32B, but maybe just give a two-sentence explanation about what that meant.
For Massachusetts general law, there is a process in which towns can join the GIC by sharing a percentages, percentage of the cost savings with the unions. And the town can automatically transfer subscribers based on that percentage, its mitigation fund, and potential savings.
So basically, our vote was to leave the current system?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, if we come to an agreement and everyone agrees, yep.
But we've given you the go-ahead to start exploring that with the unions, with the idea that we might join the GIC?
Yep.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
And just some from Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust News, the executive director actually just attended the resignation today. Bids for the highway department came in last week. Looks like we're going to be moving forward with a bid of $213,500. We're going to be borrowing about $190,000 worth, and we have some funds available from the original capital expenditure to cover the, the additional funds. So we were hoping it would come under 190 to 200, but we're still able to kind of move forward with this, and if we don't, if we don't go forward with this, we're not going to be able to plow streets, so. Because we got to keep the equipment in a temperature-controlled environment, if not, then the diesel fuel will gel up and then we won't be able to use that vehicle, so. Last week, Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust approved a 19% increase for our Medicare plans, and that will be effective on January 1st. Want to congratulate, Sip and Spin, I have the name wrong there for a second, their grand opening was October 2nd, so we have a new business over at the Red Rocks Plaza.
When are they applying for a liquor license?
Just coffee right now.
Well, then it could be Sip and Spin. Sip, Spin, and Suds, yeah.
I think they're on to something, okay. Move it along.
The chairperson, I went to the MVP award ceremony at Beaver Brook last Thursday, attended by the Lieutenant Governor and a lot of the state delegation. It was a pretty interesting project over there. It's a former golf course of close to 300 acres that they are rewilding, letting nature kind of take over. They're also moving, the trustees are moving their headquarters there as well, so. Southampton received a little over $80,000 for their.
They're Northampton headquarters, not their?
Their Florence, yeah.
Their Florence headquarters.
Yeah, they're moving those headquarters. Yeah, the trustees of those locations, yeah.
Thank you.
So that was, that was a nice event, and the weather was actually really good. And then some good news and slightly bad news is we finally got in the award letters for the greenways, so we were awarded the $324,000 for our greenway. Big thanks to our, our committees that worked very hard on getting the drafts together for that. The unfortunate part is our request for the Manhain Metals Bridge replacement project was not awarded, so.
Listen map.
Okay, any comments or questions to Scott? Has anybody had a meeting of your committees that you're delegated to? Ellen, anything?
I was due to go tonight, but I believe there wasn't much of an agenda, so we've moved that to the 28th.
So was the community preservation. Yeah, I saw that they had moved their meeting, yeah, okay.
Good to know. Open space committee met last Wednesday night, but so did we, so it knocked me out. I think it was a very important set of topics that we're taking up very timely, so I look forward to circling back on some current acquisition updates. Water commissioners meet on the 20th of October, and we have high hopes of hiring a water tech, so we'll be coming forward with a job, what is it, PQCB XYZ form, and make sure that we're in line for, for all that.
Good. Okay, and on my end, nothing, nothing too much. We will have a bylaws meeting probably in the next 10 days, hopefully before our next select board meeting, just to catch up on a couple of things that we're working on, both the scenic roads bylaw and the finance committee bylaw that were going to be either drafted or modified. And the grant committee will probably meet just to catch up and see what else is coming down the pike. We have started, as Scott has mentioned, to receive notification of awards, which is great. So besides the MVP and the Mass Trails, now we're still waiting on the big one from, two from, one from Land, L-A-N-D, grant related to the open space committee, another one related to the assistance to firefighters grant, which is a FEMA grant. And this is the one, two of them actually, that we put in, one for the tanker truck and the other one for SCBA breathing apparatus units. We've not heard a thing on those, and those are normally advertised, not announced, sorry, they're usually announced, the awards are usually announced in July and August and September. And that's a nationwide grant, so we're not sure. We have not heard that it was canceled, so we're still holding out hope for those. But we have not started working on any new grant applications at the present time, just trying to take stock of what else may be coming up in terms of deadlines for potential grant programs that some of the town departments and/or committees might be interested in.
Thank you. We need to talk. The land, the site development planning, next steps.
Okay. So that's basically that, nothing else on that regard, okay? Next up, I guess, under new business, special town meeting, I think we need to talk about this again and decide if we're, when we're, we're having this and open up the, the warrant and talk about the schedule.
This fall is flying by.
Yeah?
So the school is available for November 15th, in check with the principal, so that is available.
And that's a Saturday, is that right?
That's a Saturday. I know we want to try to aim for the Saturday. I know, Robert, your concern was it might not be enough time as well.
Yeah, come on up, Robert.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Robert Floyd, college highway town moderator. We have two dates, November 15th possibility and December 6th. I vote for December 6th because it's a three-way win. It gives everybody more opportunity to dot the i's and cross the t's. The meeting will run smoother, but more importantly, it gives the people in the town to find out about the meeting, to study the articles and to be prepared and discuss it among themselves. And so it gives us three extra weeks, and it's away from the holidays, December 6th. So I think it's a win-win, December 6th.
Yeah, because Thanksgiving this year is the 27th, right?
Yes, and the 22nd, the school has a fair that would occupy the school.
Right, so the only day in November that's available for us was the 15th, I think, yeah. Have we checked on the 6th at all, December 6th? Yeah? Well?
And generally, I hear people not complaining, but wishing we had more time in any past town meeting to process the articles.
Well, hopefully, I mean, we'll, I think we probably have to take that under advisement tonight then because I think we'd have to check on the availability of December 6th to figure out if we.
Oh, we don't know that already?
If we have a choice on that, no.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think we'd been leaning toward the 15th, but I don't know, anybody's thoughts regarding holiday time and people being in town, out of town? I mean, I don't know. It's kind of a toss-up in some ways.
Never a perfect time for.
Yeah, yeah, without any particular ideas. I think maybe we could, I don't know, it might not take us too long to check on December 6th, but I mean, we've been leaning on the 15th. I think, let's, let's talk about opening up the warrant, and we'll come back to this, maybe, Robert?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you for your input. I think let's open up the warrant and talk about what the articles will be and then, you know, I, yeah, and see if we have, you know, levels of complexity maybe that, you know, align with, with your, your thinking.
Are there magic words for that motion?
Not, I don't know, are we, do we need to take a motion to open the warrant yet? Or you're going to tell us what's on there theoretically?
I can go over quickly. This is the one from the, the proposed September one. I haven't edited it yet. Article one, obviously, the biggest one would have been the senior center.
Right.
So that would be deleted. We have the health insurance funds, the PQB personnel policy, reforming the PQB. We have transportation, transfer for conservation salary, transfer health agent salary. I know there might be an updated one, but the appointment of the finance committee?
It's an updated bylaw, yeah.
And then we have the article eight, nine, 10, and 11 were for the acquisition of the Floric and.
Insecurities. Insecurities properties, yeah. These are open space going to community preservation, right, I think?
Mm-hmm. Then we had the article 11, unpaid previous fiscal year bills, and then the $60,000 from the water retained earnings for the, the previous grant that we were charged for.
So, so we know that we've got these on, on tap, as we would have done for September minus the, the authorization for the senior center funding, right?
Yep.
But we still need to vote to open up the warrant to see if there's any additional articles that would be taken, right? So I think we should then, with this in, in our mind, just open up, take a motion to do that. So Stephen, want to do that?
Right, I'd like to move that we open the warrant for a special town meeting in the fall of, to be held in the fall of 2025. Date to be determined.
Yeah, okay, Ellen?
Can I second that?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So let us consider that open. How like, well, so here we go. So on November, if we were to do November 16th, we need a week ahead of time? Two weeks ahead of time.
Weeks, yeah, for specials.
For a special town meeting, so we would have to close that certainly by the 28th of this month, yeah? At our next meeting?
Yes. You can, I, I believe you can set a date for closing it now?
Yeah.
If you, if you'd like. I don't expect anything major to.
I was going to ask, are you, do you have an idea of anything else coming your way? Have you heard of any other?
No, we have a department head meeting on Thursday that I was going to talk about it, but I haven't heard anything else other than maybe something administrative.
Warrant to close, October 28th, 2028.
All right. Feels like that should give us enough time.
Yeah, everything's pretty much done for 95% of it already.
Right. Because you were.
Well, that's where I was going to go. I didn't want to interrupt that.
Yeah.
We know we're going to strike article one. It's refreshing that we've all seen the other, our many articles before, and we don't anticipate substantive or perhaps any changes. Are there additional items that you expect will need to take up?
Not hearing it.
That I know of, no.
Not aware of, so.
Well, then with due respect and consideration to our town moderator, I think we've been here before.
Well, let's, I mean, I think, no matter what, since we don't totally have the, the idea of the date possibility on December 6th, if we close on the 28th of October, we're still in time for the November 1, in case we end up going that way, in case something's happening at the school or whatever's going on, right? So I think, let's entertain a motion, I'll make it if you'd like, to close the warrant on October 28th at our next meeting then. So I'll make that motion. If somebody would second that, please?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So let, let's have it open for two weeks and then that, in the meantime, we'll figure out exactly which, which date, but we need to figure that out within the next 48 hours, I would say, so people really understand.
Is there a preference if the 6th is available?
I'm kind of a toss-up, frankly. I don't know, there's an argument to be made about people being busy with the holidays and you want to get it done before the holidays. I suppose there's that argument to be made, but I don't have a sense.
We don't have any election months, that's going on.
There's no, no town election or state election this year at all, no.
I think we move ahead.
With?
I prefer November to December in the abstract. I can't gauge the various competing interests around.
I think if we had something else that was coming up that we needed to look into, that we needed to toss around.
Yeah, entertain that, but I don't know.
We don't, perhaps. If we were ready for September, then we should be ready for November.
Life is short, don't buy green bananas.
Do we, do we have most of the, the, what do I say? Yeah, motions and summaries written up, so you've got just a very little bit to do to finalize that.
Yep. I mean, the biggest one? Yep. I mean, the biggest one was obviously the Senior Center, so.
Right. And then the, and then on the land acquisition for the open space, perhaps? We've got that already.
You drop one or more of those motions if we hear on the land grant.
Right. So I'm gonna say, yeah, I'm thinking that between now and the end of, that's exactly where I was going, between now and the 28th, we should hear something on that land grant that might alleviate one of the motions around the, um-
You had your lobbying opportunity.
Yeah, I know. Around that timeframe.
Yep.
But, hmm. I don't, I don't feel strongly one way or another, honestly. One of the things I'm gonna bring up tonight is just getting more word out through Code Red and doing a robocall, which I know had been an issue for some people, so I'm gonna bring that up a little bit later. But I think if we can get this out and post it on the town website, feels like we've got enough time.
But Constable is absent.
Yeah. Do we want to just give it, you know, maybe 48 hours, Scott? Let's say that we're kind of in favor of the November date, but if the December date is open, could you just let us know and then?
Do you wanna, do you want to approve it pending availability of the school?
Well, we know the school's available for November. We don't have it on, on December, right? So if the December date was open, December 6th, I'm not hearing a strong-
I don't have conflict. I express my slight preference.
Yeah. All it would do would just, to give it an extra, extra couple of weeks of time. I don't know that there's a-
Well, Robert has done a pretty thorough job of providing access to all the information. Perhaps we need to be a little more proactive. Perhaps, I don't know. Crafting the message is always the issue. Just the facts, ma'am, but, you know, it's wrapped in, haven't we done this before and didn't we tell you no? No, no. That's not exactly how it went down. So I don't know. I don't know. This is, of course, the, oh, I'm sorry, this is a meeting that we never held. So how widely did that warrant get noticed? That's the difference this time around. You didn't do television.
So we canceled it too early for them to really digest it.
Yeah.
And then it was canceled, so those who did, you know.
I stand corrected. I'm thinking of your usual-
Yeah.
...exposure.
I think this is another reason why we need extra weeks, so people can-
Mm-hmm, okay.
...treat it according to confusion.
I'm sorry. I was operating on the wrong premise.
Okay. Then I think I will, if I could revise my, my motion to say that we'll ask the town administrator to find out if December 6th is an option. And if that, I'm sorry, just make sure that's the right date, yeah. December 6th, which is a Saturday, so December 6th from 10 o'clock to whenever would be available.
10 to 11.
10, 10 to 12-ish, whatever, at Nora's school, if that day is available. I make a motion that we go with that date and give the benefit of the doubt that that allows us to contact more people, or more people have chance to look it up and get themselves informed.
So now my preference is swung, thank you, to the December date, but I'd like to get it settled. And if the December date does not work, I'd like to have it-
But we don't really have a choice, but-
Settled.
But the 15th, right.
Yes.
So, okay, so let me reword this again a little bit. So we'll have Scott check in with the school to see if the December date is, December 6th date is available for the special town meeting at Nora's school. If that is available, I'm gathering that all of the three of us are in favor of that. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. And if it should not be available, we would all be accepting of the November 15th date as the fallback, because there really is no other date that we can do it without conflicting with holidays and other events at the school. So I'm making that motion to hope that's clear. So let's go with the 6th if it's available. If not, fallback position, November 15th.
Aye.
All right. Who seconded that?
I second that.
Okay, Ellen seconded that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay, is that clear, Scott?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Robert.
Robert.
I'm so used to your-
I just emailed the principal, so maybe we can-
Television show that I thought we'd seen it.
Yeah, we hadn't-
Not for this subject matter, but every prior town meeting.
The overview, right.
You do a wonderful job, and I appreciate it.
Yeah. So anyway, so the motion is, has been made, and the warrant, though, will be open for the next two weeks. And so Scott, we'll let you bring that forward to-
Right.
-department heads and see if there's anything else floating out there that maybe we don't know about right now. But hopefully that will take care of it. Okay. Next up, we have the 25 holiday closures on here, but I think this is not really an issue. If you wanted to go to the Select Board page, Scott, and just show people on the town website. So we, we had actually decided on holiday closures last year, so if any of the, oh, there you go. So on the town website, under Select Board, there's a section called Policies, and Holiday Office Closing is there. So if any of the town departments who are listening are confused about that, please go to the website, because we acted on this last year. I gather there was a question about it already in terms of-
Usually complicated.
In terms of Thanksgiving and so forth, but we, we are, we've taken care of that as of last year. So again, go to the Select Board page on the town website and look for Select Board Policies, and you will find it there. Land use planning updates, Scott? Anything happening on that that we need to be talking about in terms of schedules as well?
A lot of stuff happening, but not for public distribution yet.
Oh, okay.
Very shortly, though, I think.
Yeah. Do you think this will be a, a meeting of sort, not another open meeting, or we don't know yet?
I think we're gonna have an, yeah, we're definitely gonna have an open meeting one way or another.
Okay, okay. So we'll know by our next meeting, maybe, or?
Hopefully.
Yeah, okay.
I think so.
All right. 250th anniversary, just very briefly, we had another great hike up Palmer Mountains. Cindy Palmer did her thing and led the last hike for the, for the year, I think, up the mountain and had, I don't know, probably a dozen people or so. So that happened on the weekend, and then-
Thank you, Cindy.
Yep. And on October 25th, the Hampshire, hello, the Christ Community Church of Hampshire County, there we go, is having its Fall Bazaar, and so the 250th Committee is helping just to co-sponsor that, and we will be there selling merchandise. We have our last merchandise available, so please, if you haven't gotten your, your Christmas gifts yet, your pint glasses or your mugs or your T-shirts, come find us. We'll be there. Other than that, we've got a couple of things organized for November, which include a, another musical bingo night. This one will be at Tin Can Alley Lounge over at the bowling alley area. And then that's gonna be, right now, it's looking at a Sunday afternoon, November 9th, and we'll get some information out on that. And then a church service on November 23rd at the Congregational Church, which will be a service of gratitude, talking about the relationship between, the historical relationship between the town and the church way back going into the 1700s. And then it also will commemorate the 15th anniversary of the community covered in town. So those are a couple of things that are happening in October, November. We've got a big bunch of things happening for December, and we'll get to that once we finalize some plans. But stay tuned. We're still working. We've got a few more, a few more events to go. Okay, any other business that can't wait for the next regular Select Board meeting on the 28th? I just have one thing. We have in front of us this letter. If you recall, we had our joint meeting with the various five towns, talking about, other Select Boards of the five towns, talking about our health insurance crisis that we're all facing. And there was a movement made to, motion made, rather, to have a letter addressed to our senator and rep, as well as the senators and reps that represent the other Hill towns, to request legislative support to help us with this insurance crisis. And we have a letter that has three or four particular requests in there, which is to expand and stabilize rural school, school aid, reform unrestricted general government aid, cap or offset assessments, and transparency in state finance. And so we wanted them to advocate for these reforms in the FY27 budget process. And so this is a letter that each of the Select Boards for the towns of Chesterfield, Ocean, Williamsburg, West Hampton, and Southampton are being asked to sign, to send off to our various legislators. So in our case, Senator Veles and Representative Pease. They would like to get this done sometime by next week, so it would need to go in before our next meeting. If everybody's had a chance to take a look at that, I'd like us to make a motion to sign this, and we'll just get it out on letterhead, and maybe in the next day or two, we can just formally sign it.
Yep.
Okay?
I'll second that. Just because I'm particularly slow tonight, we've been focused on Hampshire County Insurance and a variety of cost overruns or unexpected increases in Hampshire regional school budget. And this is different. It's not insurance-related. It's our take on statewide school budgeting issues stated to schools in general.
Right. Yes, but also-
It may be inclusive of-
But also talking about this, you know, massive, you know, 40% increase in health expense, you know, health insurance that, you know, all of the regional towns in our Hampshire Regional District are facing. So, yeah, it is a little bit more focused on, on school aid and other-
School aid.
Other aid coming in from the state. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. So, you have a second?
We'd already addressed an actual letter on the insurance crisis to Senator Veles and Pease. We had done that ourselves earlier on, so this is a more of a collective letter. Feeling that perhaps if five towns got together, or the Select Boards of the five towns got together and addressed one letter, that maybe that would carry a little bit more weight than each of us doing it individually, so.
I agree. And I just want Southampton to know that we're raising the cry, because we can't do it solely on the backs of the taxpayers in Southampton.
Correct, right. So, yeah.
Do you want to call the vote?
So, yeah, so I think we, we have a motion to accept the text of the letter, I believe, and-
Second.
Second by Ellen, okay?
Minus second.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So we will just get this out on, on letterhead, and then, Scott, you can just let it know, let us know it's ready, and we'll come by and sign it sometime before the end of the week, okay? Then we can get it off to, West Hampton, I think, is the one championing this, to get it to our powers that be. Okay?
This is probably the right place for my random question, but we've talked about asking the Department of Transportation for a traffic count on Route 10.
Mm-hmm.
Did that application get completed?
It did. Randall and I completed it online. I don't know when it'll happen, but I think he'd ask for it as soon as possible.
Right.
And it will be basically a traffic count.
A count for a full week.
Yeah, so it's more volume based on, and that's what they offer in terms of the free one. And so that will happen, hopefully, sometime in the next two, three weeks, I would think. So, yeah, that did get them.
Great, thank you.
Got them. Yep, okay.
Closes that loop.
Wonderful.
I'd like to move a one-day wine malt permit for Nicole Goldsmith for a parallel skin spa to 85 College Highway, Friday, December 12th, 2025, from 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM for a party.
Okay. Looks like everything is in order here, paper-wise, so could we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that motion passes, so this is for December 12th. Okay, we will sign that tonight. Thank you.
Right. I move approval of minutes of September 2nd, September 9, and September 23 of 2025.
Have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Ellen, okay. Just two, two tiny corrections on, just typos, very, very tiny, and I can catch Judy on them.
I have one more typo, too.
Are you found one, too? Okay. Go ahead, if you found what you had.
It's so tiny, it doesn't even matter. Let's see, on, on the 23rd, we have a robocall, Robert, aye, Johnson, aye, Falls, aye, Ellen DeBruin, aye.
Need an aye after Ellen DeBruin on the 23rd, okay, we got it. And also on the-
No, it's not mine.
Also on the 23rd, just a typo on, on the name of, I think it was another alcohol and wine permit, Gaspar, it's a, not a B, it's not Gasbar, but Gaspar, so it's a P instead of a B. And then on September 2nd, just Mark Cassis, it's a K-A-S-S-I-S, not a C-A-S-S-I-S. So I'll get with Judy, and we can make those tiny corrections. So with that, with those corrections, all those in favor of approval of those three sets of minutes?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you very much. Where are we at here? Next up, old business, is that where we are? Sorry, I lost my track of mine. I think we are, old business, yep.
Yep.
Okay, FY24 audit. So I think we heard a little bit about that tonight, Scott. Is there any more to add on that? How, how well is Megan doing? How, how is she able to catch up on any of these things that are required to, to be able to get something in there?
No, I think, I think Megan will be able to do it pretty quickly now. She's got a hang of everything. I met with her again today, so now 23 is out, and she's a little bit more used to everything. I think it shouldn't, shouldn't be too, too long.
Okay. That's great. I hope that we can, we can do that. I really, I know Bradley had told us that he wanted to be able to get the free cash in by, by mid-December, so I'm hoping we can keep on that timeline. I really like the sound of that. We need to definitely get on top of this and be-
Are there enough hours in the work week for Megan to do the audit and keep current with reconciliations of current accounts?
That's the question, right? Because she's only part-time, right?
Um, I, I think with, with Angie and payroll being a little bit more time on that, you know, she's outsourcing the bills and things like that, so I think she'll be able to. We're gonna start having a third party do all of our mailing and kind of, for our water bills or tax bills. I think it's Robert, I forget the other, Robert, I think, Robert Half, I think, or something like, it's, they, they're, they're the collector that we use.
Mail-in service?
And they'll mail them out. So instead of having staff take three days every two weeks to do all that stuff, it's gonna be able to make it a little bit more easier.
And that's a cost-effective service for us?
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, I mean, things like that, so I think she'll be able to do it.
All right. Well, that would be helpful. I think if we can, if there's any other ways that we can be of support, let us know. But, and right now, she's on, remind us, she's there two days a week, is that right, or?
Sometimes three.
Okay.
Yeah, but usually Mondays and Wednesdays are the primary day.
Okay. And she's here the entire day of those days, or not quite?
Um, if there's a third day, then it's reduced.
Right, okay. Good, all right. Next up, Code Red enrollment, and I'll ask Scott if you just bring up the town website. I know, folks, there was commentary after our last town meeting or somewhere in between about people not getting robocalls, so I just want to throw this out. The system that we have is called Code Red. It is primarily used for emergencies. It is able to be used for other things, and I know in the past we have used it to announce to residents when there is a town meeting coming up or a town election. So I'm proposing that we get back on that schedule and, and do that going forward. However, I have checked today, and the Code Red statistics show that we really don't have a lot of up-to-date numbers, according to our police chief who manages the, the, the page, I guess, related to that. We have 3,794 people actually enrolled in Code Red.
Oh, wow.
However, our messages have only reached 1,997, which means that about half people of the people, I'm guessing, have changed from a landline to a mobile number-
Sure.
And have not gone in and updated. So where Scott just was, on the homepage of the website, sorry, Scott, I'll kick you back a minute. On the homepage of the website, just scroll down under that nice picture, you'll see a thing for Code Red. Hit that, and it will take you to the page where you have to update your information. And it's not only phone calls, it's also texts and emails. So you can choose what you want to do. But if you don't have your correct information in there, you're not gonna get a robocall. So if you'd like it for basic emergencies, which I would highly recommend, let alone some routine information such as town elections or town meetings, this is the time to get it updated. So I'm really guessing that a lot of us, I know myself included, I had, when I first enrolled in it, I had my landline in there, so I went back in and changed it to my mobile. And I have a feeling a lot of us are in that same boat, where we just haven't updated it. So please, take advantage of that. If you have any questions, reach out and let us know. But it's very easy to-
Thank you.
To update.
Thank you for going this next step. You can enroll without downloading an app?
Yeah, I believe you can.
That's an option.
Yeah, you can go enroll right online. You don't have to download the app. You can download the app, you don't have to, I don't believe. Yeah.
Darn right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Alright, thank you for that. Alright, um, next on the agenda for just old business, I put a couple of things on here that I just wanna be sure that we don't lose track of. We had at the, I guess it was one of our town meetings, I forget if it was the May one, or before that, we had adopted the prudent investor rule, and we needed to set up a trust fund for looking at, basically a management recommendation body, I guess, to help our investment company, Bartholomew, to understand how we want to manage our, our various trust funds, not our general fund, not our, you know, everyday money fund, but the special trust funds, and these are usually funds that have been left, for example, to the library, to the Park Commission, to the Conservation Commission. These have been usually bequeathed through somebody's will, and so these are special ones that are managed differently through our investment process. And I believe the prudent investor rule now allows us to go outside the basic categories of investing that Bartholomew has been locked into for all these years, and allows them to go out and explore other, other possibilities, other options for our investment. Is that correct, Scott?
Mm-hmm.
So we need to get back on that whole process, and again, it's another issue most likely at the treasurer's level, and given all that Megan's gotta go through with getting ready for the 24 audit information, I don't wanna dump this on her at the present time, but I know that this is something that we do need to get back on to, and it fell through the cracks, I think, with our changing of our treasurer collector, but let's keep it on here, just as a reminder, that we wanna not lose track of it, okay?
Would it, would January be a time to hear about action items on this?
Um, possibly, I, I guess we can see how well we do with getting in, yeah, getting in all the first audit information for 24, but that sounds reasonable, that by January, maybe we could see where, where we are in that, I don't know.
We would need to also fill the commissioners.
Right.
We have to do a call for volunteers.
Okay, we would need to call for volunteers for the commissioners of that, and we need to understand a bit more about their role and responsibilities, probably on that as well. Okay, so we'll, we'll circle back around on that, I just wanted to tag it so that we don't lose track of it altogether, okay? Anything updating in terms of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, or the East Street tip thing? I think you said that the East Street folks were out recently, or?
Yeah, Randall did meet with the, with DOT about one and a half, two weeks ago.
Okay.
Just to move forward with that, so-
So the East Street rehabilitation, whatever, is still on the books for, for what they've said?
Yep.
Good, and nothing yet on the Stormwater Enterprise Fund?
No, that's gonna be a little while.
Yeah.
I mean, ultimately, it's gonna be another, it's gotta go before town meeting, and there'll be a, a cost to that.
Right, okay. Alright, so we'll hang on to that one for a while, but again, these are just kind of in a holding pattern, more just to be sure that we don't lose track of anything. If you know of other things that we've talked about at other Select Board meetings that you'd, one, not missed, then shoot them at me, and we'll get them on the agenda, too.
I have a piece related to the East Street rebuild. We approved a water line, a water main upgrade in Route 10, and it would need to coordinate East Street and tie in this campus. And so the timing coordination of those things is critical, to have the trench open just once. And so, while the East Street project is moving along with a reassuring, or more definite timeline, the borrowing and construction bidding and so on for the water line is needing further attention and approvals. But it, it's really a coordination issue, and they're in two different jurisdictions.
Right, and right now, they've still gotta work on getting it from the water line from Clark Street to East Street first, as the next phase, I believe?
I think that's the next phase.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yes. It's, it's the very next thing in the Water Commissioners list, or the Water Department's list.
Good.
And it'll be a very expensive miss, if we don't coordinate with the East Street project.
Yeah, well, and again, there'll probably be some grant money available toward that, too. I mean, I think they've had some grant money in the past on that, if I'm not mistaken, but I could be wrong. I could be mixing it with something else, but, anyway, okay. Yeah, and if you attend the, you know, the Water Commissioners meeting coming up, then I'm sure you'll have an, an update on that the next time around, or something in terms of, you said there's a Water Commissioners meeting coming, so-
Yes.
You know, we'll have an update in terms of any information there. Good, okay, our next Select Board meeting, regular Select Board meeting will be October 28th. And then, at this point in time, we will be going into executive session. So the reasons for executive session are per MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and this is related to health insurance. And MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and this is for the police union. So with that, I'll take a motion to move into executive session, and not return to open session.
So moved.
Alright, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Johnson, aye.
Bruin, aye.
Falls, aye, okay, we will be moving into executive session in about a minute. We are adjourning here at 7:15 in open session, and we will not be returning.